I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, March 19th, commencing at 4:30 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Noiva Camina, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Critzer is online, and myself, Councilmember Salah Dinas, the presiding officer. There are eight items on the agenda. The first item is the amendment to Redmond Municipal Code 9.46.010 to Mayor's State Law, and we have Police Chief Daryl Lowe, Deputy Director Lisa Mayer, and Supervising Prosecuting Attorney Rebecca Mueller.
Thank you, Council. My name is Rebecca Mueller. I am the Supervising Prosecutor for the City of Redmond Prosecutor's Office. I am joined here with Chief Lowe this afternoon. Our proposal this morning is for Council to provide direction on our proposal. If approved, we would be asking to move it forward to consent on April 2nd. The proposal that we are putting forward is really just an update to our current chapter of 946.010. In that chapter, Council has previously adopted a slew of RCWs. The one that's really a focus from our end is the one that we've adopted that's unlawful bus conduct. That one has changed and has become unlawful transit conduct in the state law. And with the light rail coming onboard, we wanted to make sure that our RMCs are up to date. And so our proposal is, one, adding a line at the beginning of this RMC that would prevent the need for us to come forward in any future changes of including language of adopting by reference all future amendments, changes of that statute or recodification in the future. And also, two, then we would be updating the unlawful bus conduct to unlawful transit conduct and that, all those elements that accompany that RCW. I would just draw the Council's attention to the fact that that RMC in 946.010, as I mentioned, includes a few other references to RCWs. The major change that we've also put forward is striking, one, 991110, which has since been repealed in state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to have a chance to hear if there are any substantive changes to the conduct therein of the transit or of the expectations around transit or conduct, excuse me.
I don't have the history of the RCW in front of me, so I can't tell you what was unlawful bus conduct when we adopted it originally in 19, I think it was 1985, an amendment in the 1990s. I can tell you that the unlawful transit conduct does include a variety of behaviors, such as smoking on the transit, such as disorderly conduct, unreasonable disturbance of the peace, certain other expectations of behavior. It does allow for a definition of what transit is, which is addition or a change from what just a bus is. I can certainly provide that. If that is helpful, I can do some research on that. But I will say, the majority of the change that we're putting forward is to elevate it, I guess, from just bus conduct to transit conduct and that behavior that goes with it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. And before any other questions, I do want to let the record show that Councilmember Anderson has joined us and Council President Critzer has joined us in person. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I have no issues with this. After I was able to go and read the RCW, I do think in the future it might help us if we are making sure that the RCWs are linked so that we know what to go and read and research, because it was really interesting to read, like, you know, roller blade onto the bus and all the different things that this covers. So I'm excited to approve this on the, I believe it was the 2nd.
Thank you, and thank you for that feedback.
Councilmember Fields?
So basically, you're just updating the language to reflect the other codes?
Correct.
So there was, you did talk about in the future, rather than come back to Council, we're delegating to somebody to update this as, you know, as we go on, or other changes will drive it. So my question is, what would drive that change? What kind of things would happen that would tell whoever we're delegating this to to actually update it?
Well, we'd be delegating it to the state legislation, so I don't have a magic ball as to what they may or may not come up with.
Okay.
But that's what's driving the change for these RCWs. And so by basically adopting any future changes, any repeals thereof, that would be driven by state legislation.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that even though you don't need to come to Redmond City Council, we will at least be briefed when those things happen in the future?
There is not a process in place right now for updates to revisions. There are many that can happen over time in any of the RMCs that we include this language on.
Okay. Understand.
I'll get that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Perfect. There's no objection to the item going to consent on April 2nd. This item will be placed on new business.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is the approval of the Christie Law Group, PLLC Contract 2023-2024. We have Police Chief Daryl Lowe.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So for starters, the memorandum should be for approval and not to provide direction. What this is, is a contract for the Christie Law Group, which is the law firm that represents the police department in our various litigation matters. As outlined in the memo, this is an extension of a previous contract that was brought to Council prior to the inquest process that occurred towards the end part of last year. So this represents the remaining balance that is needed to pay for those services previously provided.
Thank you, Chief Lowe. Any questions from Council? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Interested in if this should be something for executive session, since this is pending litigation or inquest. And just other questions about, like, are these officers still employed with us? Many of us weren't on, I don't know if any of us were on Council when this occurred. So just had some questions about the logistics.
I'm glad to set up an executive session to brief the entire Council, including new Councilmembers, on the litigation matters that I'll say we have pending or that just recently concluded. But this here, like I said, is an extension of a previous contract. So this here is getting authorization to basically pay our bill. So I'll say yes and.
Okay. Is the work already completed?
Yes.
Or is this, the work is completed?
Yes. This inquest concluded at the end of 2023.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Anderson?
For this item, do we typically work with this organization? And this is not an extension, this is a reimbursement contract? I just want to, like, will we be seeing something similar to this going forward?
Yes, this will be the law firm that I'll say either Department and City intends to maintain a relationship with for police-related matters. They specialize in representing municipalities and police departments in litigation.
Do we have a sort of an on-call contract with them? That's my, I guess that's how I would describe the official question. And when will we see that?
Not yet, but yes, we are in the process of drafting that, and that will be coming forward for on-call services moving forward.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
I apologize if I'm the only one for which this conversation isn't adding up with the memo now, because what we actually have in front of us is an on-call contract for work that has already been completed. And the memo states that there has been no Council contact prior to this, but in the introduction, it was stated that there was Council contact on this prior. So I don't know if I'm the only one, but I see three things. So I guess, can I ask my questions, if the chair may allow, in this regard? This, number one, is for work that has already been completed, and Council is now being asked to pay the bill. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, this is for work that has already been completed. I apologize for the misstatement. I was under the impression that we had already come forward with a contract request prior to the beginning of the inquest. And I know that as part of this process, we were going to execute an on-call agreement, so we didn't have this issue before, because my recollection is that there was an amount of money that was allocated for this. The services exceeded it, and thus, that's what we're here for now, is to essentially pay the bill. This is, represents the final outstanding balance for this particular matter.
And on that, so the memo states that it has a budget impact of $200,000. But there's no accounting of what the contract, well, actually, because it looks like there is no contract, professional services in excess. It looks like we're missing some accounting of what the $200,000 is or is on top of in this memo.
Okay. Then with their, we'll pull it, we'll get our ducks lined up, and I'll come back. I apologize for the confusion.
Councilmember Fields?
I appreciate that, Chief, because I had very similar questions to Councilmember Stewart. But I also have, I'm going to reiterate what Councilmember Forsyth requested. I would like to see the whole thing go to executive session. This, I get this could be a contract extension, it could be a contract dispute, it could be all kinds of things. I think the Council needs the cover of executive session, and I think it's appropriate. So that's my request. If it turns out that I'm wrong in that assumption, then somebody can let me know.
Understood.
Any other Councilmembers? Council President Critzer?
It does sound like there are some questions, and I'd be happy to work to, with Council Vice President Forsyth and the mayor, to schedule an executive session for this topic. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and pull this item and move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of five-year contract with Forest Metrics. And again, we have Police Chief Lowe.
And again, this is for approval. This is, in fact, a new contract that has not come before Council before. And what this represents is this is a software platform that would be an overlay to our existing CAD, which is a computer-rated dispatch system, and RMS, which is our records management system. This particular software overlay would allow us to be able to essentially rapidly search through all of the records that we have available to us within our database. It also has analytic capability to go back through and look at the information that we currently have. Again, these are within Redmond databases, not from outside sources, no open source information, no publicly available information, just things within our CAD or RMS. So for example, if we have a location that we've been to multiple times, it will have the ability to flag that information from the new call that comes in. It will label it for us. For example, if we've been to that location before, and perhaps the individuals at that location, you know, have a hearing impairment or some type of disability, or there's dogs on the premises, some information that would be relevant to the officer while en route, it would be able to flag that for us. But the other thing it does, much like a search engine return, it will then hyperlink any previous reports or anything that we have in our systems. Right now, if an officer wanted that information, they would have to request it from one of our dispatchers. One of our dispatchers would then have to go into multiple systems to try and find that information. They would then need to look through it, perhaps skim through it very quickly to see if anything catches their eye, whereas this system here will allow that information to be readily available to them, searchable, linkable. One of the other features, as was mentioned in the memo, there was a request for us to go back and look through our previous calls for service and our previous 911 calls to ascertain which calls perhaps an officer would not need to be sent to, that there could have been an alternative response or something like that. It has the analytical capability to show us that particular information, and thus, with the funding aspect of it, part of the ask is to utilize the $35,000 that was previously budgeted for a consultant towards the cost of this particular contract for that particular purpose. And then, I believe, the, as big of a caveat to it is, our current CAD and records management system is coming up on about three decades old, so it's about 30 years old. There will be a need to look to replace that, not in this biennium, but within, let's say, 2027, 2028. By having this overlay in place, once that migration or once that project occurs, all of our existing data will then be pulled forward into that new system. Typically, when you upgrade a CAD and RMS system, the data integration adds a minimum of a million to a million five to the cost for that build-out and integration. So if approved, we will essentially, I'll say, have that ability and look to save us upwards of a million dollars on a future project that will be coming forward.
Thank you, Chief Lowe. Any questions from Council? Councilmember Noiva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that, the outlier, that. For the total cost, it breaks down over five years, and it's got, you know, year one at $45,000, year two at $75,000, year three at $75,000. We continue to jump year four, 111 and change, and then 117. Can you help me understand where, because I didn't have a contract or anything to look at to understand those costs?
Thank you. I forgot to mention, so the first year represents a 55% discount. We will be the first police department in the state of Washington to actually utilize this particular platform. It is being utilized in other states, and in some states by multiple departments. So it's the graduated cost, but representing, like I said, a significant discount in that first year. Typically, it's in excess of about $120,000, $125,000 per year is, I guess, if you want to call it the suggested retail value. But again, being, I'll call it, the early adopter, the first one in Washington, that's what represents that significant discount on the front end, and then it graduates over the five years of the contract.
Council President Critzer?
First question is, when can we expect to see the contract itself?
I can bring that forward. I didn't realize it was not included in your packet.
Yeah, it was just the memo in the packet. So, yeah, it would be great to be able to look at that before we bring this forward for approval. And so, yeah, lists here is one through five, and I noted that it said in here that there were no budget impacts, but it seems like this, it would be a new expense. So is this, is year one this year, or is it not going to begin until next year, and then we would budget for it?
Year one would be this year. The goal is to, if approved, have this onboard probably by quarter four of this year. So it would have a budget implication this year, and like I said, if approved, using the $35,000 towards that first year cost that was already budgeted.
Okay. So where it says no budget impacts, it's more that you've identified the funding sources that you could find in the budget in order to pay for it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be great to have that clarified as we see this coming forward. I think it makes sense to me to, and great to be able to have more, better technological systems and make that update. And I think, you know, I'd be curious to hear from the Councilmembers who had made the proposal around the consultant. But it does make sense to me if we could invest in something that could produce that data analysis over time, so that we could continue to track that, that that could be a helpful investment, rather than a one-time investment. But I am curious to hear from my colleagues on this.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you for the setup. I am of the opinion that the $35,000 would have had a specific ask, and that we have not fulfilled that specific ask still. The premise behind that ask was to have an outside agency come in and do that work to make sure that we were finding all of those data points and just have that outside viewpoint. And it sounds to me like, while this can get us part of the way there, it kind of makes sure that that's all still internal. Don't know if the data points are in the data for those different call types and how we sort that information. So I just have a lot of questions around how the calls are tagged, if they're tagged in a way that will actually show, that did the officer follow up, that, you know, this wasn't a call that a police officer needed to respond to, just a lot more, it's bringing up a lot more questions, which I'm sure surprises you. But moving on from that, I'm interested to know if this has a voice search capacity for the safety of our officers while they're driving, if that's something that this includes. And interested if we looked into other, I know Olympia uses an open-source product that does similarly, so interested to know if we looked into anything else like that. And then again, on the data, how will the data be tagged in the future to make sure we're actually getting the desired information that we want? But for now, for me, $35,000 is a no.
Councilmember Fields? Sorry, I don't know, Chief Lowe, if you had an answer to that first, or, yeah, sorry.
I always have an answer. So a couple of things. It is not open source. I am familiar with a number of different technology projects or products. This here is specific to our data within our systems, and I think there are benefits there. I understand what the ask is for the consultant, but I would suggest that, you know, basically bringing in a person at that dollar amount to look at it, I don't believe that we would get what the intended outcome is, whereas this here is, you know, obviously, an automated process. So it will bring back that same data, and then if we want to then have a third-party review or evaluate it, I would say I could see, I'll say, a potential, you know, perspective there. But as I, you know, share with the Council, I understand what the desired outcome is. And, you know, myself and other staff, we have done, you know, the work. We've reviewed the programs, we, or should I say, I have, you know, traveled to the various programs around the country to look at the alternative responses. When we get into the conversation around budget and alternative response, you know, I will have a proposal to address that particular issue, you know, for consideration. It is just, you know, my opinion that this particular product and platform, you know, meets all of those needs, and then some, looking, like I said, further out in that endpoint about the data migration piece on the replacement of the CAD and RMS. I would say that alone makes it, you know, worthwhile, in addition to all the other, you know, functions and things that it provides for us.
I will meet your yes and with a yes and. I still want to see that work be done on the backend, like you said. So if we were to move forward with this product, that we still have that consultant come back and analyze that data.
Okay. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So I've got three questions, and before I ask those questions, I do want to echo Councilmember Critzer. As you described the benefits, I see the value, and I think it's really important that we look into a more data-driven work environment for our public safety people. I'm a big fan of what you're describing that you're, would like to see happen here. My first question is, why didn't we go out for bid on this? It doesn't look like you solicited other proposals.
So this is, I'll call it, a unique and proprietary system. The way it functions and operates differs from the open-source product Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned. So this here is not an open-source search tool or engine. This here, the best way I can describe it is a overlay onto our CAD and RMS, so this strictly deals with, you know, only our data, you know, I'm saying update. There are concerns around, you know, privacy and personal information and the accuracy of information from open source or third-party sources. We do use databases for that purpose, but they come, you know, at a cost for every record name, et cetera. You have to pay for it, and then the more you pay, the more accurate the outcome and information. So this here overlays for, you know, what we have, and then kind of piggybacking back on Council Vice President's other question, as we work with the developer, they will work with a team within the police department to ensure that we properly identify, you know, those data points that we're looking for, to be able to tag it and bring that information back. And then they would be available to us, you know, as we move forward or as our needs, I'll say, modify or change or get more complicated, they would be there, you know, to make those adjustments as necessary.
Sort of evaluating or synthesizing what I just heard, you're saying that City and you were able to determine that there's no other competing product of whatever kind that would get you to the same set of outcomes and desired success metrics and success outcomes. And I typically have found in my work history, that's not true. There's always something out there, and soliciting bids is a healthy way to make changes in our IT in particular. So I'm a skeptic of what you said, but I also appreciate that you know a lot more about it than me. The second thing is, the five-year contract, and this, as you, in your words, we're sort of the first in the state, a commitment of five years, did you look or consider, you know, a two-year with an extension or an option, some kind of risk mitigation protection in the contract, rather than commit to five years?
So we talked about a number of options, you know, as are related to the contract. I believe what I've, if you want to call it negotiated or presented, represents a fair process, both for, as Stewart's, of, you know, of the people's money and the benefit that we will derive, you know, from this particular product, as evidenced by the substantial discount on the front end. I'm glad to, you know, go back and see if they would consider, you know, different terms, but I would venture to say that the numbers, you know, would probably increase in those subsequent years. So if we did a two-year with, you know, a one-year extension up to five years, I would venture to say, and this is just speculation on my part, that, you know, years three, four, and five would probably look different than what they do in this current proposal.
Or a two-year with a three-year extension?
For two years.
Because after two years, we should know that it works for us. I get it. All right. Then the third question is, who's, who is going to project manage this? Is it somebody from the police department, somebody from IT? Are we going to hire a project manager to make sure that we get what we want and we achieve the benefits, and we find a way to measure the benefits?
Both. So there's been a, I'll say, a restructure within the police department. I have an individual that is serving as, basically, my innovation and technology manager, and then we are working in conjunction with TIS. We do have two staff members from TIS embedded within the police department. So it'd be a collaboration between both departments.
So one last question. So back to the $35,000. What I recall is when Council proposed it, and it was a former Councilmember, Councilmember Khan, who was the primary advocate, it was during the budget process. And at the time, you expressed the thoughts that maybe we had the resources and the capability in-house to do that work. Have you then researched it and discovered that not only did we need to do what Council wanted, but that then, that some and more? Is that where we're kind of at here?
I don't recall it the way, I would say I didn't, you know, necessarily agree with the need for a consultant. I know we have the data. I don't know that bringing an outside person in to try and go through that data is going to yield the desired outcome and results. But I do firmly believe that this particular platform But I do firmly believe that this particular platform will be able to provide the required analysis from that existing data and then provide us, you know, with the information that council was looking for, you know, for that alternative response, you know, direction or, you know, or those possibilities.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Anderson next.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate the explanation and the questions from my fellow council members as well. I absolutely second the idea that we're talking about a contract we haven't seen. I'm particularly curious about one thing that you mentioned, which is the personally protected information and how that will be managed within the contract in terms of privacy considerations. Specifically, will the data be tied to a person or a location?
So, my favorite, yes and, so both. So this information, there is no, the data, our data does not leave our building, our service. This is the best way I can describe it as a non-technical person. This would be a plug-in or an overlay to our existing system, and it would just operate within our system. The vendor does not have access to it. They don't get it. It's a closed system, I guess is a better way of describing it. So no personally identifying information that we currently maintain is shared with anyone. It does not go anywhere outside of our own system.
So it's both people and places here in Redmond?
Yes. So it's the, yes, it's the information that we currently have and maintain within our dispatch system. So, you know, 123 Main Street, if we've been there five times, whatever information we have about 123 Main Street to include people, whatever, that is all there. That would all be, you know, what is accessible and available to us.
And then I guess the next question on the backend of that is if there is no crime or something that is reported? I understand that there's a public record associated with that, but at the same time, there, would an individual resident be able to remove their data similar to some of the data privacy regulations for larger companies?
No, it would be no different than a resident would not be able to remove their data from our CAD system now because it would be a public record that we would maintain. So for example, if a 911 call or a call for service comes in, that's where we get that information from. It's a public record. It stays within our database. So consistent with, you know, all the applicable laws, it would all be there. Like I said, this system overlays on the top of it, so it doesn't go, you know, anywhere, nor does it pull any other information in about that location or that person. It's a closed system is the best way I can describe it. And that system is our current CAD and records management system.
Got my hackles up a little bit on that because if we're talking about how many dogs people have and that level of detail on individual residents, it's a little concern there for me. Love to see the contract.
Right. And I should, so not how many dogs, but so if the officer went there and say there was a vicious dog or something like, the more, that type of information, not that they have, you know, three Yorkies in the poodle or that type of thing.
Okay. Although that is, of course, interesting information. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Chief. I think that folks working in Redmond should have the tools to do their job best. And if the tool can accomplish what the 35,000 was intended to do, then I would suggest maybe we see a demonstration of that. It sounds like we can't send this to consent on the second anyway because we don't have the contract and we have a lot of outstanding questions. So in some form, if we could see that demonstrated, that would be helpful. And if it doesn't, then that is a different conversation entirely that we should have more directly anyway. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
I was just going to note that we do currently have a law enforcement technology study session scheduled for April 9th. So I'm wondering whether we potentially could loop back to this as part of that study session? Were you planning to cover this as part of that?
Yes, we will realign and we will be ready on the 9th.
Great. And assuming it's not time urgent to get it done, I guess, would we be able to delay enough to have that conversation and then make the decision later in the month?
I will make it work.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. Most of my comments, actually Councilmember Stewart covered perfectly what I was going to ask and also what she shared in that we want what's best for our officers in terms of the best technology to make sure that, you know, they're serving our community well. So looking forward to seeing this on the April 9th study session, but it will be pulled from this agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have, oh, any other questions? Perfect. Acceptance of Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program or the CHIP grant. And we have Planning and Community Development Director Carol Helen.
Thank you, Presiding Officer Sala Houdin. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm introducing the award of a grant for connecting housing to infrastructure that we received in January. This was, in October of last year, Arch notified the city that Inland Construction, who was the housing component of the developer for Together Center, had, basically had a shortfall in their funding to convert their loan to a permanent loan that was resulting from the impacts of the concrete strike and the escalating fees and interest. So the city applied for this grant. It can only be applied for by cities or counties. The city applied for this grant on behalf of Inland Construction. The grant was awarded on the 29th of January, and they awarded half of the amount that we requested. So it was, we requested $871,876 and received $435,938. We are planning on making up the balance if this grant award is accepted by the City Council, and we would fund that out of the $10 million to essentially pay the King County wastewater sewer treatment capacity charge so that this developer who developed the 280 units of affordable housing at the Together Center could be made whole on that part of the project. So what I'm asking this evening is for you to direct us to place the grant award on the consent agenda for April 2nd.
Thank you, Director Helen. So Councilmember Stewart and then Council President Kritzer.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And since we are just discussing the acceptance of the grant money tonight, I'm in full support of that since you mentioned how we might come up with the other amount from our $10 million that we designated for affordable housing. I believe we have been asking for an overview of how those dollars overall are looking and what the balance is essentially because that is $10 million, of which we want every penny spent on affordable housing. So if we could get an update on that soon, that would be helpful.
I can absolutely do that at the next, at our next PSNHS meeting. And some of it you already allocated as part of the Arch approval that you did. So about $1.5 million went to the Bellwether project in Overlake, and another $600,000 went to the restoration that was going to Emma McRedmond. So some of that, we can, I can certainly put together an accounting and bring that back to you.
Great. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Did you?
Perfect. Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Just had a quick question. Always happy to accept grant money. Always great when we can get some grant money in. I was interested in, since it's, grant money pays half, the city is paying half, there's a, if not approved, note here of the Together Center would need to identify other funding sources or do budget cuts. I'm interested if you could just elaborate on that part of it. Not that I'm saying that we're going to go that route, but sometimes these anticipated results.
I should be more clear about that. It would have been something we would have had to, that they would have had to make, raise money for. I also just want to point out that it's actually not the Together Center specifically. It is the Together Center project. But the owners of the housing component of this project are Inland Group and also Horizon Housing. So the payment is basically an invoice that has gone unpaid to date. And what we are proposing to do is accept the grant, match it, and pay the King County wastewater system charge on behalf of that project. And then they would be able to convert their loan without penalty. And I can correct that in the next version that goes through just to note, it's not the Together Center as an entity itself, it is the housing developers' component of the project cost.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Director Helen. I got a couple of questions. The first one, when the grant was written, or written, requested, it was specific for a cost overrun of an existing project? You wrote the grant in that way to say, we need grant money to cover the costs, the capital costs of somebody that we are working with to build affordable housing? That's an unusual grant in my mind.
It's actually how the CHIPS grants work. It can be two different types. One can be, the funding can be secured before the project is undertaken. The other avenue, so it could have been part of the funding stack. And actually, if you see, look at other projects and the funding stacks, oftentimes there is a connecting housing to infrastructure component. The developer didn't think they needed that component of funding at that point in time. But after the funding ran, after they were done, like I said, they are actually paying interest fees in about $300,000 per month that they will have to essentially pay as part of their loan conversion that was as a result of things that were out of their control, like the concrete strike.
So back to the question, though. You wrote the grant in that way. I get that we could have put additional funding together on behalf of this project before we started. But now, now it's sort of after the fact, and I'm curious, when we wrote the grant, did the grantors understand that this money would be used specifically for the specific reasons that we're using it for?
Oh, yes. I apologize, I didn't understand the question. The actual grant materials are included in the attachment to this document, and it was quite clear that the project was built, it was occupied, this was an invoice, it was related to overruns, and that the grant was being requested to offset some of those overruns by availing themselves of this grant opportunity.
And then, okay. And that helps a lot. I'm sure it was there and I could have read it, but thanks for explaining it. So then the question becomes, you know, why us? Why did the city need to do this? Why does the city need to provide the additional money? You know, what makes this our burden?
So first of all, the connecting housing to infrastructure grants can only be applied for by city entities on behalf of affordable housing projects. So the entities were either King County, or it was the City of Redmond. They went to King County first because it was the King County wastewater sewer capacity charge. King County didn't have the time or the capacity to file the grant on their behalf. And so we took on the responsibility as an Arch member city, and this was a project that was funded by Arch dollars to essentially advance the request for this grant. We achieved the grant, but only half of it. And then your question to, why is it our burden? Inland Construction has built two projects in Redmond. They're a good developer. They are, they care about their properties. We really, affordable housing projects are very difficult to put together. And as a result, the ones that are good developers, care about the community, stay in the community after they build, are really great assets to our future success in these housing projects. And so in this way, we can essentially fill some of the gap of this housing project that they're facing right now as a result of nothing that was within their control. And when the council allocated the $10 million in the budget, it was for purposes to address affordable housing. And it has been used in that regard, and I apologize, it probably would have been relevant to bring back what things, funds we have committed to date, but it is things like this.
So speaking for myself, when I voted in favor of that, it was with the idea of future capacity and future affordable housing, not necessarily to fix problems that manifested in the past. So not quite sure, maybe other council members who voted understood that that was going to be part of the need, but I did not. So I get it. I appreciate your answers. I am concerned about precedent here. I'm concerned about a number of things. This is just sort of backwards for me. So I have to think about it. And at this point, I'm not, my vote is not to put it on consent.
Council President Kritzer?
Two questions on this. One is, in terms of the decision that we're making, this is in terms of accepting the grant, is that correct? And then will you come back to us with a separate item for us to approve the other part of it?
No, because the $10 million that was allocated in the budget was fully allocated. So we have been spending it on the things that are consistent with the Housing Action Plan, the things that are consistent with the Arch, the Arch goals. I will definitely bring back an accounting of what's happened, what we've committed to date and the types of projects. They are the 3.5 million that was committed for Plymouth. It was some, the funding associated with this project. It was the Emma McRedmond project and the Bellwether project to date. So they've all been basically Arch constellations of projects in Redmond.
Great. Well, and most of those other projects, we did at some point give you the direction to be able to do that. So I guess the question is, in this item, is are you going to be using our action as inherent direction that you should essentially both accept the grant and allocate that other chunk of money?
Yes, and this is, I have been hearing frustrations about transparency, and this was full transparency that we were planning on asking you to accept the grant, and then we were also planning on essentially matching the grant and paying the invoice.
Great. Well, thank you for laying out the process. That's really helpful. And then I guess I had a kind of a similar question to my colleagues, just in terms of understanding the usefulness of making inland whole on this. So what I heard from you, and I just want to make sure that I got it right, is that the, the part of the use is that in kind of making them whole in this, we hope that they will then go and develop more projects and also have some more of that capital to be able to approach additional projects? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct. And it's also, it actually will mean that they will be operating at a deficit once this loan is converted because this capital expense will have to be rolled into their loan when they convert it. So it wasn't anticipated, and because they burned through all of their contingency, they did have a very healthy contingency, but the, both the concrete strike and the rapid interest rate increases over time has really left them at a disadvantage. And we would like to see Inland Construction, for instance, when there are properties, one of the projects that the council has asked COO Files and I to look into is basically an understanding of all the surplus properties in the city and whether there are others and whether we can go out for processes to solicit developers to create affordable housing on those project properties. Inland would be a great partner if they, and we would really like them to apply in the future.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Councilmember Noava Kamina?
Thank you. Director Helen, thank you very much for the work that you've done on this as well as the staff, understanding, and we've been through it recently, like all of the complications and how complex it can be for funding. And during that time, during the pandemic, and dealing with things like concrete strikes and things that are completely unprecedented, and having the foresight to protect our relationships with affordable housing developers. I also wanted to thank you for modeling what it could be like working hand in hand with developers when we've got a higher vision. So I just wanted to acknowledge you for that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item? So just want to confirm with you, the requested council action is to move it to consent on April 2nd. Are there any objections to that? Councilmember Fields has objected. Is this a roll call vote?
I...
Yes, Council President Kritzer?
I would suggest we could just put it on new business.
Perfect. So we'll just move this to new business and move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. So it's 5:20. We have 10 minutes left until 5:30, and we have four agenda items left. All are informational, and we've received the information ahead of time for each of these four agenda items. So I'll ask the staff members who come up for the next four items to, if they would like to spend just a very, very quick overview, but we'll hopefully ask questions of the council. If you have any questions that can be addressed later, please email them to our directors. So we have Director Seraphy Allen, Planning and Community Development. So we have Director Seraphie Allen, Planning Community Development; Brooke Buckingham, Human Services Manager; Brian Coats, Deputy Director of Police; and Jim Whitney, Deputy Director of Fire for the 2023 Thrive Annual Report.
Thank you. And I'll start it off, and since you already did the introductions, I'll skip that part to save time for us. So we are here to provide a brief summary of the 2023 Thrive Report and answer any questions you may have. The report was provided in your packet. And I just wanted to note that while the accomplishments are primarily shared in numbers and statistics, I'd like to center that behind each one of those numbers is a person and their story and our staff working to support them behind that. I also wanted to flag, although it sounds like we might not have time for the discussion anyways, but I thought it might come up. So I wanted to flag that in quarter two, we're going to be providing an update on the new community health program. And we anticipate that next year at this time, we will include that program and its number and datas as a part of this report for the 2024 Thrive Report. So just wanted to preempt that. And then I'll turn it over to Brooke to provide a short summary of the report itself.
Great, thank you. And I will try to be brief. But I just want to acknowledge that to Seraphie's point, there are people behind these stories and behind these numbers and that it can be hard work. And it's really important to celebrate the wins and the wins of the team. So last year was no different. And as you can see, there were a lot of successes for all of the Thrive partners, which includes Mobile Integrated Health, Mental Health Professionals, Homeless Outreach, Community Court, and Human Services. So I'm going to start with Mobile Integrated Health and say, give some big kudos that the team has recognized that the 2023 Crisis Intervention Team, Fire EMS Agency of the Year for Washington, Idaho, and Oregon, that's a mouthful. But really, kudos to the team for that award. And Redmond was also the first fire department in King County to offer a lead behind Narcan with fentanyl test strips. And then some of the numbers that are in your packet, the MIH team served 300, excuse me, served 370 clients last year, provided continuous training to 911 crews, offered 250 blood pressure shocks, and attended multiple health fairs. And I'm sure that's just a glimpse of their daily work. The Mental Health Professional, Ms. Kroll, was directly assigned to 324 cases through September of last year before she left the city. As you can see in the report, she responded to a number of calls for welfare checks. And Deputy Coats can speak to any additional data points in her work. Homeless Outreach Staff, Tisa Rutherford, worked with 331 clients. This includes individuals currently experiencing homelessness as well as many of our housing unstable residents. And I just wanted to say that she housed 100 individuals last year, which is really a remarkably high success rate compared to other programs providing similar services. So it just really was amazing. And this is in part due to very persistent navigation of complex systems. So some of these include Arch. We know that a lot of times that's a consistent follow-up with Arch properties, about availability of units, helping with documentation, filling out applications, move-in assistance. All of those things are really critical. The Housing Connector Program, just a recap of that, that has been an excellent partnership. What that program allows us to do is work with landlords to waive a lot of the requirement to secure units. So some of those things around past evictions or debt owed, they waive those with the assurance that clients will receive one year of case management through TISA and some assurance that if there is any residual cost, that those will be covered through the Housing Connector Program. Great, successful program that we're able to use that. King County's coordinated entry system, that's very complex. But that is how we access very specific homeless units that aside in all of King County. So TISA is able to access those units through her partnerships and new referral partners like Plymouth Crossing in Bellevue, where she has already housed 12 of her clients. The Redmond Community Court, 62 participants in that program and 85% of participants graduated. Again, a very successful model for an alternative response to regular sentencing of misdemeanors and crimes. The Human Services Program contracted with 75 service providers in our community. And this includes a lot of one-time art buy funding contracts. And I just want to say of note that 22,000 residents receive services from one of these programs. We are not able to unduplicate that numbers, but it just really, the reach that our nonprofit providers has in our community is amazing. And we know that residents are in need of a variety of services from any of those programs. So I just want to wrap up with saying that I think these successes can be attributed to our commitment to serving community with compassion, persistence, partnership, adaptability, high customer service standards, and consistent follow-up and follow-through. We are really thankful for the council's support of the Thrive Program and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Council Vice President Forsythe.
Thank you. Just real quickly, the three staff members that we allocated for hiring, is that what we're hearing about next month?
That's correct. I will say that one is hired as a pre-update to that update.
That's exciting. And then just kudos.
Two.
All three? Breaking news. Yeah, you heard it here first, folks.
There you go. Awesome. Updates we don't even know yet.
For the microphone, April 1st, we will have all three hired. Fantastic. And I will just say, congratulations on the Narcan and strip program. That is huge. And I'm sure it will be greatly utilized and appreciated for the community members. And if there's any way of tracking any successes with that, I would love to know if that's a possibility.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council President Kritzer.
I just want to say thank you to you all. And even though she's not here, I want to say especially thanks to TISA for that, for the really amazing work. I just want to underline, one of the stats that was noted was that last year we housed 100 individuals through that, that really great work. So there's a big need in our community to make sure that we have access to housing. And so, and the data is really supporting that there. And the fact that we were recognized for having the highest number of client placements in housing is really huge. So kudos to Ms. Rutherford on that. And then one question, just on the staffing question, where are we at in the process of rehiring for Ms. Kroll's position?
I know this is a little sticky. Bad news on that front. We did select an applicant for that position, extended a job offer and had a start date. And then we learned just recently that she has withdrawn from the process. So we are back to square one on that. And we don't have another applicant to look at right now without restarting our process.
Okay. Well, keep us updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, and then any other questions? Please feel free to reach out to them on email.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Always appreciate this. And I'm sure the practitioners who are usually at the table with us are eager to hear how this conversation went. So I do just want to extend my gratitude as well to all of them. And I look forward to the community help conversation next month. When we get that, one of the things I always appreciate when we have this conversation is your team is on the ground and is not only has a deep daily understanding of what's going on and what the challenges are in Redmond, but we've been hearing over time about the impact of the pandemic and the recovery of the pandemic and how that is affecting our community. So in the context of the community health program next month, if we could also begin to hear some, to hear once again some of that story about how are the folks at Redmond doing that are dealing, that are interacting with your practitioners on a daily basis? Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And again, thank you so much for the work. We'll move forward to our next agenda item, which is the Fire Save versus Loss in Q4 of 2023. Before we get to that, I will say it's 5:30. Council, are we good to extend for 10, 10-ish minutes? Perfect, thank you. So for this agenda item, we have, perfect. We have Chief Shepherd, we have Fire Chief Shepherd, we have Fire Marshal Todd Short and Assistant Fire Marshal Rich Gosecki. Or Geiski?
Yep.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, Council. Fire Chief Shepherd, thank you for being here this evening with us. Fire Marshal Todd Short will not be in attendance this evening, just for your information. And from respect and time, we'll just go ahead and let you take over.
Perfect. And out of respect of time, the report is good. This is the fourth quarter report for 2023. We're a little late with this report, but we currently exceed all of our performance measurements for fire containment, for value saved, for continued occupancy, and obviously for civilian fire deaths at zero. Even though we've seen a pretty substantial increase in fires over the last couple of years, we're continuing to do very good work. So I'd be open to any questions.
Thank you. And again, for the audience, that is a very great, great report. So Council Vice President Forsythe.
Thank you. Just briefly, I noticed there was an uptick in cooking fires. And since the cost of food is going up and the cost of everything is going up, I imagine that will continue to go up. So looking for some solutions and answers of what we can do to educate folks, put it, push out social media, you know, that is, you've got to instill it in me to not put anything on my kitchen cook surface. So what else are we doing?
That is a very stoop point. So two biggest areas of increase we've seen in fires over the last year and over the last several years are both cooking and brush and wildland fires. So as things get dryer, we're burning more. And then also as people are cooking more, we're seeing more cooking fires as well. So it was one of our highlights in our Fire Safety Week, Fire Prevention Week last year. So we did do some cooking demonstrations at the fire station and what not to do with cooking fires. And we're going to continue to focus on that moving forward through our Spring Safety Fair, through our Fire Prevention Week, and also through our new public educator as well.
And just on that, there's some exciting news coming down. We are having a public education officer. That's one that we're looking to fill. We're also looking to pivot and have more social media outreach from the organization. Angela Brown will be heading that up. She's in fire prevention right now. So you'll see a lot more communication to the community.
Great, thank you. Any other urgent questions for now? Otherwise, follow up with our team later. Great, thank you. We'll move forward to our next agenda item, which is actually a finance item from Finance Director Kelly Cochran and Financial Planning Manager Harith Nara, the 2025-2026 Budget Process Monthly Update.
Yes, thank you. I do need a little bit of direction today. Two of the things that we, you don't need to look at, register. Two of the items that we discussed at the study session were the council calendar as well as presentations that we intend to bring to you in the summertime to orient you to department budgets and what those are looking like, challenges they're facing. So I wanted to, first of all, just make sure that you are good with calendar and if there's anything that needs to be adjusted there. Good? Excellent. And then the other was the department presentation. So we had put together a quick overview of what those would look like. Just quickly pulling it up. So we would start with every department's mission statement, followed by an overview of their department, covering their baseline budget offers, which is essentially their programs and how they compare to the previous or current budget that we're in, what their staffing authorizations look like, performance measures, as well as the one-time dollars that were allocated in the current biennium. So we can let you know what has occurred with those dollars. And then an introduction to, you know, what our challenges have been in developing the 25-26 budget. Good? Excellent?
Perfect.
Perfect.
And I know we have a couple of questions. I will, I don't know who raised their hand first, but I'll go to Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, this is so comprehensive. I love the format and I'm looking forward to the conversations this summer.
Council Vice President, or Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, appreciate this. One thing that I did want to note on schedule change was just the, that originally the last meeting was scheduled to be on the week of Thanksgiving. And Council Vice President Forsythe and I were looking at it as part of agenda setting and suggested that we put the last meeting as a special meeting on that Thursday the week before. So just wanted to flag that for others. So that way hopefully we could wrap it up before Thanksgiving and have the Thanksgiving week where maybe the staff, our finance staff can take a well deserved break.
We might be starting kitchen fires, but a little out of practice. But I do want to point out that to accommodate that change, we did move up the start time for a few of our council study sessions to 6:00 PM. And we'll note that. Okay, well, we will get the council calendar posted online, maybe?
Yes. We have one more question. Councilmember Anderson.
It's a comment, but I just wanted to say how much I enjoy the presentations and the mention that you had of the budget presentations for each one. They're super helpful for new council members and it's one of the things I enjoy the most about the process. So thanks.
Looking forward to those. Councilmember Fields.
So we had a retreat some few weeks ago. And we had, we developed some council priorities. When would we, in this calendar, see those things addressed?
So I know that those are currently being shared with city leadership and then they will get integrated into the budget process. So we will start incorporating your priorities along with the others that have been identified by city leadership. And we will work to put those into the budget. But we can provide you with updates along the way.
Sure.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I would say is August 13th is my birthday and I think it's the mayor's birthday as well. So on that day, you might bring cookies or cake or something.
Something not cooked, but yes.
That's out loud, there's a birthday party on August 13th. Two, Council President Kritzer.
Just following up on that priorities discussion, I think a great thing that was in the last budget was some indications where something was an identified council priority. So that way it was easy for us to see and for the public to see. These were things that we had kind of put forward and so we could kind of track against that.
We will definitely make sure they're documented to show that council was the guide there.
Very appreciative of you moving through this quickly. Anything that you need from our side?
No. I put together some slides. I'm going to share them with you. It just gives you an update of what else we're working on internally. Harith is making great progress with her staff. It's amazing. Feel great.
Thank you. So we'll move forward to our final item and really appreciate everyone chugging along. Again, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to the directors. Last item is DEI Program Bimonthly Status Update Report with DEI Program Advisor Jan Harrison.
Hello, good evening. Mindful of time, I'll just kind of give you a quick overview. Things are progressing well. Since we, I last spoke with you, I anniversary my first year on February 23rd. So I'm feeling, I'm feeling pretty good. I'm feeling, I'm feeling good and getting into my, finding the rhythm. And just as a matter of time, I just want to focus on the community engagement. And as I shared with you previously, I've been working on a comprehensive language, internal comprehensive language plan. And part of that allowed me to unpack and make connections with public health, my work in public health and connecting public health to community engagement. Public health has defined policymakers and city planners as public health workers. And that really kind of transitioned during COVID when they realized that the serious inequities in health and they identified racism as a public health crisis. And so connecting public health to community engagement is looking at the overall health of a community and moving forward in the community engagement, communicating with the Black African-American community, understanding their lived experiences here in the City of Redmond. I have been forging, moving forward on that and getting some, building some relationships and getting some great data. And so again, as a matter of time, I'm, as I anniversary, I'm glad to be here. My work is going well and I feel the love and support you send me. And I look forward to continuing this important work.
Thank you so much. And I will call out, there's a lot of really great updates on here in the DEI Action Plan Implementation Update. Does council have any questions on that that's urgent to whatever was discussed right now or anything on the document? If not, feel free to reach out to Program Advisor Harrison after the meeting. Perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We've now reached the end of today's agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. If not, we are adjourned.